I'll call to order this Bloomington Council Regular Session meeting of Wednesday, August 7, 2019. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Piedmont Smith.
Here.
Rallo.
Here.
Volin.
Here.
Sims.
Here.
Sterbaum.
Here.
And Sandberg.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our agenda summation this evening will proceed as follows. We'll have no approval for minutes, no minutes for approval, that is. We'll go to reports from council members, the mayor and city offices, and then council committees, and then we'll reserve 20 minutes for the public. We have then appointments to the boards and commissions, and two items for legislation for second reading and resolutions, those being ordinance 1913 to amend Title 15 of the Bloomington Municipal Code entitled Vehicles and Traffic regarding amending sections 15.32.080, no parking zones, and 15.37.020 applicability of residential neighborhood permit parking zones. That received a committee recommendation of due pass 7.0. Our second item for this evening for second reading and resolutions is ordinance 1914 to amend Title 2, Administration and Personnel of the Bloomington Municipal Code regarding amending Chapter 2.12.110 Parking Commission to loosen requirements for appointments to the Parking Commission. Received a committee recommendation, due pass 7.0. Then we'll go, we have no legislation for first reading, and then we reserve an additional 20 minutes for public comment before we visit our council schedule and adjourn this evening. So, no minutes for approval. I will go now to reports from council members, and I'll begin on my left with Councilmember Sandberg.
No report.
Thank you.
Councilmember Sterbaum, do you have a report?
Yeah. It was the first day of school for Maxwell Sterbaum, and he's a first grader and proud to be a Templeton Tiger, and he's just excited, and it's nice to see life starting all over again.
Thank you for that report, and congratulations. Councilmember Sims?
I'll report.
Councilmember Volin, do you have a report?
Just a brief one. I wanted to thank the council for allowing us to schedule the Land Use Committee before this meeting. We are starting at 7:30 for the first time in a few years now. It was our former start time, and we now meet at 6:30. But the Land Use Committee had a successful meeting that ended right around 7:15, so we needed all that time to hear fully from everyone who came with interest in that PUD that was sent to us. We did decide to forward the PUD to another meeting on the 28th, so we won't come back with a report until September 4th. I just want to let everybody know that that meeting just took place. Thank you. And I want to thank councilmembers Piedmont Smith and Sterbaum for being on the committee. Thank you.
Thank you for that report, but it might have been at the council committee report, but that's all right.
True. I didn't think about that. My apology.
No worries. Councilmember Ruff, do you have a report?
No reports on it. Thank you.
Councilmember Piedmont Smith.
No report. Thank you.
And I have no report this evening as well. So we'll now go to mayor and city offices. Welcome, Ms. Callender Anderson.
Good evening. I am Beverly Callender Anderson, Director of the Community and Family Resources Department, and I am here tonight to introduce Jenna Whitaker, the city's after-hours ambassador. Jenna's position was created last year as a result of a recommendation from the Safety, Civility, and Justice Task Force. I'll let her tell you a little bit more about her background and how the job has been going since she started July 1st, but I want to say that Jenna has been a great addition to the CFRD team, and we're looking forward to all that she's doing in the future. So with that, I'll introduce Jenna Whitaker.
Hi there. I'm excited and grateful to be here tonight. So a little bit about me, I'm currently pursuing my master's degree in public administration through O'Neil Online. I have a varied background in public safety, hospitality, and the service industry, as well as higher education. And currently, I'm focused on building those relationships with the downtown community, focused on streamlining and simplifying city governments for those after-hours businesses, those that frequent downtown, and making it more accessible and available, whether it's concerns, suggestions, and issues. So really, I'm just getting out there right now and networking with various community resources as well, so I know what I can offer community members that might be struggling with things like addiction, homelessness, experiencing homelessness, or having other issues that they might need pointed in the right direction, as well as our vibrant downtown and all the IU students that are about to return. I see them coming in already, so it's been great so far, and it's really just getting out there and building those relationships is what I'm focused on right now. So I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, and welcome. And yes, we'll have some questions. Councilmember Volin.
I used to be the nightmare, but I'm happy to cede the duty to somebody who's more competent than me. I do have a question. Do you plan to attend the meeting tomorrow, the monthly meeting of the Kirkwood Merchants Association?
Yes, I do. And that's been a big part of this, has been attending those downtown meetings, collaboration with DBI. They've been a great resource, just to network and meet all those key stakeholders.
Can you give us a sense of some of the items, just like a diversity of the items that you're dealing with? Will people see you in bars, on the sidewalk? Will they see you in restaurants? Like where might people meet you in the course of a week?
All the above, actually. So I'm out and about mostly on foot, and in and out of businesses, conscious not to interrupt their busy hours. So some of it is outreach during daytime hours or when it might not be as busy. But yes, I'm popping in and out, checking in with them, introducing myself, not only to the managers, but the staff that's maybe at the hostess stand, et cetera. So I'm just out making the rounds.
Last question is, how much do you know about parking?
I'm learning.
There's a lot to learn. Love to chat with you about it sometime, anytime you want to. And also, everyone should be using Park Mobile. Are you guys using Park Mobile? I'll teach you. All right. Thank you. Nice to meet you. Thanks for being here.
Thank you.
Further questions? Councilmember Sterbaum?
Yeah, I'm speaking just a little about addressing the homeless population and your interaction, and your, what assistance you can provide.
Yeah. So I recently was able to, a gentleman reached out to me, and he's been battling addiction for quite a while, and was looking for a resource, and I was able to point him towards Amethyst House and give him that information, that contact information. And I work closely with the downtown resource officers with Bloomington Police, as well as their new social worker. So it's really just getting out there and hearing about what they're experiencing it, and what resources they may know about, or may not know about, and pointing them in those directions.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions? I had one about, would you be willing to come to council now and then and report on your experiences?
Definitely.
And your challenges and so forth, so we learn a little bit about what you're doing?
I would love to.
Okay. Terrific. Thank you, and welcome. Again.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Hello, Ms. Sims.
Good evening. I'm going to adjust this because I'm a little bit shorter. So I am Doris Sims, the Director of Housing Neighborhood Development Department, and I am here tonight to provide the council information regarding the city's consolidated planning process for its community development block grant, as well as this home investment programs that which is the funding that the Hand Department receives from the Department of Housing and Urban Development. Every five years, HUD, or the Department of Housing and Urban Development, requires the city to undertake a planning process of evaluating its housing and community development needs, and also to complete an assessment of its housing policies to make sure that they're not discriminatory to residents looking for housing. This planning process requires the city to reach out to its stakeholders, as well as to the public, to provide input on the activities and the programs that we will undertake utilizing the CDBG and home funds that we'll receive. In completing our consolidated plan and our analysis and impediments to fair housing, the department is working with Mullen and Lumberd Associates out of Philadelphia, Pennsylvania. We held two stakeholder meetings on June 11th and 12th, as well as two public meetings, inviting the public to provide input on how we would utilize our CDBG and home dollars. As well, we did an online survey that was available both in English and in Spanish, and that survey closed on July 31st. Received 429 responses to our survey, which I feel is a great return. Some of the preliminary survey results were, of the 429 responses, we only received six that were completed in Spanish. Females responded outnumbered males, 76% to 23%. Nearly half, 48.6%, between the ages of 25 and 44. The highest priority, which is no surprise to anybody on the council, as well as to myself, was affordable housing that they would like for us to work on in the next five years. When we asked what the highest priority was for public infrastructure, it was water improvement, as well as sidewalk improvements. When we asked about the type of public services that they felt that we should focus on over the next five years, it was women experiencing domestic violence, as well as services for youth in foster care, or youth who are transitioning out of foster care. The most common basic for housing discrimination that the respondents held when they were looking for housing was based on family status, race, and due to a disability. When we did the actual stakeholder surveys, affordable housing again was one of the top priorities, as well as childcare and transportation. So a final report of our consolidated plan, as well as our analysis of impediments to fair housing, will be brought to the council for approval in February, along with the outline of how, of our action plan on how we're going to use the first-year allocations that we'll receive under the CDBG program. So I'm available if you have any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Sims. Questions from council? Councilmember Sterbaum?
Is this going to give you a realignment of the way you use the resources? Are we pretty much in line with those needs, anyway?
So what it will do is guide the usage of where we need to focus on the use of our CDBG and home dollars over the next five years. And as I stated, this is something that every five years HUD requires us to go and talk to our stakeholders, as well as to the general public, to get input on what they would see us, would like to see us focus on in spending those dollars.
So our periodic allotment, they'll use this as a map and say, this is why we should do this, this, and this?
Well, so what we'll do is that we'll take all that feedback that we've received from the online surveys, as well as from the stakeholder meetings, and we're still doing some one-on-one stakeholder meetings, and then based upon that, we will write the consolidated plan and show, and try to focus on those activities that were shown to be most important to the public for us to utilize those dollars.
But there's a committee that just, that actually allocates the money?
Yes. So the money's still the first-year annual allocation. We still will have our Citizens Advisory Committee, so I still will be coming to the city council to appoint two members to sit on our Citizens Advisory Committee to evaluate the applications that are coming in for funding for the next year, but taking into account the information from our consolidated plan, and making those decisions and allocating those dollars.
Right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Further questions? Seeing none? Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll now move to, well, council committee reports? Any other council committee reports? A reminder that the Land Use Committee will meet again on the 28th of August at 5:30, correct?
We don't know yet.
You don't know the?
We have a best scheduled time.
Okay. But it will be the 28th of August for a second hearing on the planned unit development at 1800 North Walnut. Okay, we'll go to the public now. Please step up and identify yourself, and you have five minutes.
Thanks. Hi, I'm Greg Alexander. Second Street, West Second Street, has a sidewalk issue, like most of the arterials in the city. I had a friend that lived out there, and there's been historically for the last 20, 30 years, there's been, you can go on the north side, and then the south side, north side, south side, and then you get to where you're going. And everybody that lives out there knows, you know, here there's no sidewalk on the north, and here there is no sidewalk on the south. They cross, they, it's a routine. It's a little degrading, a little dangerous, but it's a routine. And we've built now a side path on the north side. A lot of issues with that. That violates our own, what is it called? The GPP. But whatever, violates engineering best practices, whatever. At least it's a sidewalk, you know, thank goodness. But it's got a gap in the middle at Patterson, which there's a project now to address that, and I love that. By the way, that we are filling in some of these sidewalk gaps. That is awesome. We have so much more to do. Anyways, as part of this project, filling in this gap, they closed the sidewalk that had pre-existed on the south side of the street before they had built the sidewalk on the north side of the street at Patterson, at Second and Patterson. And there's no sidewalk on the north side of the street. You can't even like, you know, people will walk through the mud and all that stuff. You can't, there's a huge hillside, and there's like a plumbing supply store, I think, at the top of the hillside, you know, where the, like the chimney fireplace store is. Anyways, so they closed that, and for almost the entire month of June, there was a sign there saying, sidewalk closed, use other side. Well, that was blocking the south sidewalk, the pre-existing one, and you couldn't use the other side. No matter how hard you wanted, no matter how willing you were to walk through mud, you simply could not use the other side. And there are so many things we could say about what we could have done to not have this, but to me, what I want you to understand is the emotional experience, the human experience of walking there, because you've got this kind of tactical, technical problem. You can try to walk through, the businesses there have parking lots. You can try to walk through the parking lot if you can get to it. You can walk through the street. You can walk through the construction site. Pedestrians are really, really willing to walk through construction sites. It's not supposed to be that way. You know, that's not the approved way to make a construction detour, is that pedestrians just walk through construction sites, but that's what happens. But you see a sign that says, use other side, and there is no other side, and that's an emotional, it's a communication from the city. It's from the city to you. You. You know? It's in your face. It's saying, I don't care if you make it home alive today. And so I got this from the newspaper. This was July 3rd. West Second Street and Patterson Drive, 7:27 PM Sunday. Police responding to reports that a man was jumping into traffic. Arrested a 27-year-old man on a preliminary charge of public intoxication. I don't know that guy. I haven't talked to him, but you can kind of imagine what happened. He was walking home drunk. I mean, thank God, he's walking home drunk. I think that's a great thing. I think we should have more of that. And he came to this sidewalk that was closed, and it said, use other side. And he walked in the street, because what's he supposed to do? He walked in the street. And he had an unfortunate exchange with the driver. I don't know if somebody went too close to him, or if he was weaving or what, but it didn't get him home. And the driver called the cops. And now they're saying, he's jumping in the street. Why? Because we didn't have a sidewalk intersection. You're getting people arrested for walking because we didn't have any sort of sidewalk detour. We just cut off the only sidewalk in the neighborhood, and he had to walk in the street, and he had no choice. And then he was arrested for it. So when you see me, I'm someone who's willing to come here. I'll berate you. I'll berate staff. I'll file you reports. I'll do all these things. But the people who actually use these sidewalks on West Second Street, they know the city will be there to arrest them for walking in the street. They know the cops will yell out of their window, just harass them for walking in the street. I have had that happen to myself. But they do not know that the city will give them a sidewalk. They don't know that because they've never seen it. Thank you. Sorry to waste your time.
Thank you, Mr. Alexander, for your comment. Seeing no other public, we'll now go on to, are there any appointments to boards and commissions this evening? Seeing none, we will now go to legislation for second reading and resolutions.
Mr. President, I move that ordinance 1913 be introduced and read by title and synopsis only.
It's been moved to second, that ordinance 1913 be read by title and synopsis only. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Will the clerk please read?
Ordinance 1913 to amend Title 15 of the Bloomington Municipal Code entitled Vehicles and Traffic regarding amending sections 1532.080, no parking zones, and 1537.020 applicability of residential neighborhood permit parking zones. The synopsis is as follows. This ordinance eliminates redundant or inapplicable no parking code and creates new parking spaces on Dunn Street north of Seventh. Your committee recommendation is due pass 7.00.
Thank you.
Mr. President, I move that ordinance 1913 be adopted.
Second.
All right. Mr. Volin?
Yes.
To the 80%.
Just to briefly remind you what we talked about last week in committee, the whole. Ordinance 1913 is sort of a cleanup ordinance for parking. It does a couple of things. It makes it possible for there to be parking on Dunn Street between 10th and Sixth Street.
Councilmember Volin, since we have this visual.
Could we put it up?
Could we put it up?
I would need a minute to turn it on.
Sure, but let's do that, because that will be clearer for everyone, including people at home who are watching. Thank you, Councilmember Volin.
Sure. So this ordinance does, if we can turn it so that north is up, that would be helpful, too. Thank you. And just, yeah, we can enlarge a little bit so that only the blue and red marks are, be helpful, yeah. So we're looking at a map of part of District 6. This includes 17th Street and, most importantly, Dunn Street. So one aspect of this ordinance brought to me by Scott Robinson of Planning and Transportation takes into account Dunn Street. So the issue is that the new neighborhood zones 4 and 5, which are the, Mr. Sherman has pointed to the new zone 5. It used to be zone 6 and 7. It's been combined into the new zone 5. And zone 4, which is to the west of Dunn Street, combines the old zones 4 and 5. I know those numbers are very confusing. But the new zones 4 and 5, they, their border is Dunn Street. And Planning and Transportation said, A, this street is widely regarded as something of a speedway, and B, it can be calmed through the addition of parking on that street. And so one section of this ordinance enables parking to be placed on the street. You can see the blue marks represent where no parking signs will be removed, and red marks are where no parking signs will be added.
So they're crossing the street there?
Yes. In other words, that it would be on the, well, actually, I don't have the map in front of me. Let me see. I think he meant it to put that the red marks were on the west side of the street, and the, let me find the relevant section here. So Dunn Street, from 9th to 10th, it would be parking on the east, wait a minute, yeah, parking would be allowed on the east side. Dunn, between 9th and 3rd, parking would be allowed on the west side of the street. Now, there's already parking on the west side of Dunn, on 3rd, on 4, between 3rd and 4th, between 4th and 5th, and between, Kirkwood, rather, between Kirkwood and 6th. So this would enable parking north of 6th Street. In addition, this section also enables parking on Walnut Grove on both sides. What the ordinance does is it removes the no parking signs from that street on both sides, and also on a short segment of Forest Avenue between 10th and 12th. This was done in cooperation with the university. If anything, it's just codifying what's already practiced. And so that's part of the cleanup. And Section 2 adds no parking on the west side of Dunn between 3rd and 6th. And I think that that, it's already the, I don't know if there's one block that has parking on the west side, but the other two, yeah, 3rd Street, between 3rd and 4th, between 4th and Kirkwood, I think already don't have parking, but between Kirkwood and 6th, I want to say that, no, there isn't. So I don't know why, I mean, I, anyway.
It's a paradox.
Not really. It's on the west side of the street versus the east side. All the parking on Dunn will be, wait a minute. It is paradox.
Um, can I have some light on this?
Yes, please.
So the way I, the way I read it is that currently, there is no parking on Dunn from 3rd all the way to 9th on the west side. We're taking that out, and now we're putting in that there should be no parking on Dunn from 3rd only to 6th Street.
Yeah, sorry. So they're re-adding no parking between 3rd and 6th. That's, thank you, Councilmember Piedmont Smith, for clarifying it. I didn't write this language. Anyway, so that is Section 1 and Section 2. And there was an earlier section that regarded parking in Garden Hill, and at this point, I'd actually like to introduce Amendment 1 to this ordinance, if I can have a second.
Second.
So this amendment actually, it should be in your packet. It adds, you see the parking on this map on 17th Street. It allows those single-family homes, or buildings of four units or fewer, to be considered part of the new Garden Hill parking zone, neighborhood parking zone, allowing those residents to purchase permits in the zone. I was approached by the owner of a house in this, on the corner of 17th and, or, and one of these streets, I forget which one, who'd had no off-street parking at all, and was accustomed to parking on Washington or Lincoln. And it was brought to my attention that I had left this out of the definition of the Garden Hill Zone. I consulted with the Garden Hill neighborhood. They agreed that these houses should be included. They consider these houses to be part of the Garden Hill neighborhood. I believe they're also in the Garden Hill Historic District. So it was an appropriate thing to do. There was no objection. And what's important to note is that there's been a rumor going around that somehow this amendment would add parking on 17th Street. It does no such thing. It simply allows those residences with a house with a 17th Street address on the south side of the street to be considered part of the Garden Hill neighborhood parking zone, and to therefore be able to purchase permits to park south of 17th Street. My error in neglecting 17th Street at the time, I didn't think about these houses last year when we created the zone. So with that, if there's any questions about Amendment 1, I'm happy to answer them.
Okay. Are there questions about Amendment 1? All right, well, let's.
He's got a question.
Councilmember Sterbaum?
I think you just said they can't park on 17th, but they can now get a permit to have a spot and park legally back in the neighborhood.
To be perfectly painfully clear, there is no parking going on 17th Street. You'll know that these marks are green on the map, not blue. And if, Mr. Sherman, if you'd expand to the bottom of the map to show that, green shows adding to Garden Hill, I don't know what this lettering means, Garden Hill residential neighborhood parking permit, yeah. So this allows them to acquire permits, but 17th Street is not changing in any way. There's no parking being placed on 17th Street. Anyone who says so does not know what they're talking about. I hope that makes it perfectly clear.
Other questions? Amendment 1? Okay, we'll go to the public. This is Amendment 1, which is adding a residential neighborhood zone. This is Amendment 1, which is adding a residential neighborhood zone on the south side of the street from, of 17th Street from north Walnut to north Dunn Street. Okay. Seeing no public, we're back to council for comment or recommendation.
Second.
Question's been called on Amendment 1. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Ruff?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Volin?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Sterbaum?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Thank you.
Amendment 1 is adopted. Amendment 1 of ordinance 1913 is adopted, 7-0. All right, we'll continue on with ordinance 1913.
Well, so that, those, what you see on this map constitutes all the changes that propose with this ordinance. It's mostly cleanup, but I think if there's anything that, that might be controversial, it would be adding parking to Dunn Street. So I would recommend if people have questions about that, that they ask.
Okay, questions for the ordinances amended? Councilmember Sims, did you have a question?
Yes, I did. I actually traversed from 10th down to about 3rd, and most of this makes sense, as long as we have parking on one side and not on the other. So it looks like we're switching from, for an example, some parking that's on the east side will be switched to the west. But the portion between 10th and 9th Street, as you notice, at 9th, it, it takes a, if you're going south, it kind of jogs west a little bit. And at that point, all the way down to like 3rd Street, it, it seems wider than the part between 9th and 10th. And I, I think it would be very difficult to add parking in that, in that one block area and still have enough space. And actually, there, there's no parking there now, but, so you've got the lane, and that's a small one. Then the one on, on the west, it's, it's a little bit broader. So what I kind of did is just pull over to the curb area and drive a little bit, just to see how much space is, is there now room for two more vehicles between that space? And it doesn't seem like it does. So does Planning and Transportation have measurements with, with regard to vehicle width and, it'll still be a two-lane road, correct? Now, my only issue is just between 9th and 10th. Everything else seems like it's wide enough, because in many cases, there's already parking.
It's a very good question. I would say that, no, it would not necessarily remain a two-lane road. What I've received, I have to pull it up here. I received an email today from Neil Copper, the city's engineer, and he said that, I mean, this is an extensive study. It's an 18-page study that I'm happy to forward to you all about how American Structure Point was hired to study this street, Dunn from 10th to 6th. They did a traffic analysis. And they believed, there's a very extensive analysis here, it's not really worth getting into the weeds here, but they studied AM peak hour, PM peak hour. They found that the, a one-lane street would be as effective here as a two-lane street, that when people, for example, are pulling up to 6th Street on Dunn and it's two lanes, the two lanes aren't really there to provide capacity, it's just sort of convenience. So that's one reason why they believe that it was fine to convert a lane of traffic to a lane of parking. Having said that, there's three ways to park. You can park perpendicularly, at an angle or parallel. I think they're going to use whatever is most effective. At the very worst, it would be parallel parking, but I, I think they are going to take a lane out in order to put the parking in.
Between 9th and 10th, you mean?
Anywhere between 10th and 6th.
And you're advocating that it's possible for it to be a one-lane traffic from 10th to 3rd?
No, actually, this would only be from 10th to 6th, that at 6th, it would remain two lanes as it is, south of 6th Street on Dunn.
South of 6th.
Yeah. Again, the, the goal here is to add parking while slowing traffic. And, but with, there not being many other points of interest here, there tends to be a lot of speeding. Meanwhile, remember that the new zones 4 and 5 are basically combo neighborhood zones. Employees of businesses in the downtown overlay, the, the, sorry, the University Village overlay are going to be eligible as of next week to purchase neighborhood zone permits in zones 4 and 5. Planning and Transportation thought that increasing the capacity in this zone would be beneficial, however nominal the, the capacity would be increasing it. And this street happens to be right on the border of the two zones. So I'm not sure which zone would receive the parking, but the addition of parking will provide more supply for what is going to be a significant amount of demand. Again, employees of the University Village overlay are going to be paying more for their permits than residents are. It's more like $103 versus $45 a year for the permit.
So this will still be just parking one side and mostly moving to the west?
Yes.
Trying to be clear.
That's right.
And it seems to me that we already have on-street parking by meters from, I think, from 8th to 3rd already.
We may, yeah.
That we already do. So we're really moving the parking across the street.
They, they may be angling it. I don't know what they had planned for how much parking they hope to add. That's a matter of width.
Okay, and how mu, well, that's correct, but if we did angle it, how many more spaces would that add?
I don't know. I, I just don't know that number.
We think that's important to be part of this?
I would like to know, but I don't think, I don't think it matters for the purpose of this. I mean, if, I, I regret that somebody from Planning is not here, but if, if that were a big, I mean, it's going to be, it's a matter of half a dozen spaces, variation at most. That's my guess.
Well, again, I, I think 9th to 10th or 10th to 9th is too narrow, so, for parking. And even if we want to make that a one-way or one-lane street. But it seems to me at angle parking, and maybe this is the intent, that we turn from 9th to 6th a single lane. Is that what I heard you say earlier? So that's the intent, is to turn many of those two-lane roads into a single-lane road.
Yes, up to 6th Street, right.
And then that study, what does it say about feeding downtown and points east and west?
I actually have the paragraph right in front of me here. "The use of both southbound travel lanes on Dunn with the current configuration," this is from page 5 of the report from Neil Copper, which I can provide to you all, "is likely due to having the option to choose the next available lane and not out of necessity to maximize throughput from a capacity standpoint." Although queuing is expected to be slightly longer during the PM peak hour as a one-lane roadway, Dunn Street is anticipated to continue to operate and, at an acceptable level of service without any significant impacts to corridor operations." That is the quote from Mr. Copper's report.
Okay, and the report you just read from, did we all get copies of it?
He literally sent it to me about an hour before the meeting, before, he sent it late this afternoon. I'll be happy to forward it to everyone.
Well, I understand, but I'd like to get those before we talk legislation in the future. Just, I know it's not your fault. I'm not blaming anybody. They don't even require a response.
I wasn't aware that it existed until today, so I, I agree. And if, if you would like to postpone, I'm not sure that it would be.
I just think that's important to know for us to make that type of change, and even though I'm not so sure it will affect anything, so, but, thank you.
Other questions? Councilmember Piedmont Smith.
So will parking be allowed on both sides of this Dunn Street at any segment between 10th and 3rd?
No. It will be on, on the east side between 10th and 9th, and on the west side between 9th and 6th.
So is there no parking rule already in place for the, for example, the west side of Dunn from 9th to 10th?
To my knowledge, yes. I, well, actually, I can pull that up.
Because I don't find it in the chart.
I have that here somewhere, just a second. So there is a, a list added in the packet of July 31st, and this is a list of Schedule M, all park, all no parking zones. This is Bloomington Municipal Code 15.32.080, Schedule M.
That's what I'm looking at.
On Dunn Street, no parking. Trying to find it here.
Could you repeat the question, please?
Yeah.
So the question is, would parking be allowed on both sides of the street at any, on Dunn Street at any point between 3rd and 10th? Because it looks like, I'm looking at Schedule M, which is the list where there is no parking, and it has Dunn Street from 9th to 10th on the east side, and that's what we're removing. So we're now going to allow parking on the east side, but I don't see that there's any restriction to parking on the west side. So are we going to have parking on both sides?
From what I'm reading, I think the answer may be yes, so I'm afraid I don't have an answer to this either, and I regret that I am not prepared to answer this question. And I would, based on that and Councilmember Sims' concern, Mr. Sherman, do we have the ability to postpone this to the 14th? Is there room in the agenda? Pardon me?
For next week?
For next week?
Yes, it's, we could do that. Do state what you're looking for, so we can.
Well, I think the concerns are all about Dunn Street.
Is it just Dunn Street? None of the other parts of it?
The other parts are, no one's been asking questions about.
And it's the no parking on Dunn Street? All right.
Right, the, this is all about Section 1 and whether or not parking's allowed on the west side of Dunn Street and how wide the street is. It's something that could be answered by Mr. Robinson.
Yes, and I would hope to enlist your help in, in having PNC look into that issue, if you don't mind that. Thank you.
So I would entertain a motion if, if there are no other questions to postponing to a, or to moving it to a third reading. Do we just, can we just move to a third reading, or do we have to postpone it?
We'll just postpone consideration until the regular session on, on August 14th.
But I, I don't want to, I want to give everybody a chance to ask other questions if they have them.
So moved.
I guess there are no other questions. I mean, Councilmember Volin, let me just caution, is correct that if there are other questions, it could be answered at that next meeting, it would be good to know them now. Are there any further questions? Okay, so seeing none, we will go to, we have a motion in a second for postponement. Will the clerk please call the roll on postponing? Ordinance 1913 is amended until August 14th regular session.
Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Volin?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Sterbaum?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Ruff?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. That postponement was adopted, 7-0.
Mr. President, I move that ordinance 1914 be introduced and read by title and synopsis only.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded in 19, ordinance 1914, be read by title and synopsis only. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Will the clerk please read?
Ordinance 1914 to amend Title 2, Administration and Personnel of the Bloomington Municipal Code regarding amending Chapter 2.12.110, Parking Commission, to loosen requirements for appointments to the Parking Commission. The synopsis is as follows: This ordinance is sponsored by Councilmember Volin and amends Title 2 of the Bloomington Municipal Code, Administration and Personnel, to loosen requirements for certain seats on the Parking Commission which have proven difficult to fill or keep filled. Your committee recommendation is due pass 700.
Thank you.
Mr. President, I move that ordinance 1914 be adopted.
Second.
Councilmember Volin?
Yes, okay, so this ordinance does something very simple. There are nine members of the Parking Commission. When I authored the ordinance three years ago, I wanted to make sure that no one felt that the interests of the downtown were being underrepresented. And so we had two merchants on the commission, one of whom had to be within the meter zone. We had a not-for-profit representative on the commission who had to be within the meter zone. We had at least four citizens on the commission, one of whom had to be in the meter zone, one of whom had to be in one of the neighborhood zones. So this was written very tightly in order to ensure that people in those areas were adequately represented. In the two and a half years since the commission has existed, it's been difficult to fill seats because of those restrictions. We have almost never operated at a full nine-member capacity, and it was, we, we actually have a shortage of members right now, not entirely because of this restriction, but it doesn't help. And so the commission has agreed, and I certainly feel, that loosening these restrictions would make it easier. So now, this ordinance basically says that all the members, there, there need to be four citizens, somebody from a not-for-profit, two representatives from businesses, a member of council, and a member of the mayor's administration from Planning and Transportation. Those are the nine members. The only requirement is that they live within the city limits. There are no longer restrictions on their downtown residency. That's the entirety of the change. I'm happy to answer questions.
Other questions? Councilmember Sims?
I just ask if you could repeat, and I should have read this already, the makeup of the nine, four citizens.
Happy to do so. One is, the first is a member appointed by the mayor and one appointed by the council who are merchants.
Thank you. I missed a mayor appointment.
Yeah, the second is a member appointed by the mayor who's an employee or a board member of a nonprofit organization. The third are four members, two appointed by the mayor and two appointed by the council, who are residents of the city. One is a member of the common council, and one is from the Transportation and Traffic Services Division of Planning and Transportation.
Thank you.
Other questions? Okay, seeing none, we'll go to the public for comments on ordinance 1914. Back to council for comment or recommendation. Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
As a member of the interview committee for this commission, I have to say that it's been difficult to fill vacancies because of the restrictions, so I welcome this change.
Thank you. Councilmember Volin?
I just want to thank everyone for having supported the commission several years ago, and I hope that this change will be something that everyone finds agreeable. Thank you.
Thank you.
Call the question.
Question's been called in second and on ordinance 1914. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Rallo?
Yes.
Volin?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Sterbaum?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Ruff?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ordinance 1914 is adopted, 7-0. We have no legislation for first reading. We have reserved additional public comment time for items not on our agenda.
This isn't an abusive process too much, but I hope to comment on 1913, and it might influence your consultation with staff, just a little history on Dunn Street. In the 2008 Greenway System Plan, it calls for bike lane on Dunn Street between 3rd and 17th.
Mr. Alexander, I'm, I, hold on for one moment, but I assume, Council Attorney Sherman, is it appropriate, we postponed this, this evening, but it was on our agenda. Is any comment permitted or not permitted?
Depends how it's phrased. If he's saying, in the future, I want you to consider something, it looks like it falls within public comment.
I see, I think that was implied, so proceed, Mr. Alexander. Sorry to interrupt.
That's fine, thanks. So in the 2008 Greenway System Plan, it calls for a bike lane between 3rd and 17th on Dunn, and on the 2012 Bike Ways Implementation Plan, the Voyage to Platinum, it calls for those to be installed in 2015. And it's just so infrequently that I see an opportunity to clearly communicate about the state of bicycle infrastructure here, but I just want you to know those bike lanes, it's 2019, they haven't been installed. Thanks a bunch. Thanks a bunch.
Thank you for your comment. All right, we will now move to council schedule, and this concerns our meeting of August twenty-eighth. Mr. Sherman?
Before we do that, I just want to...
Oh, I'm sorry.
...give you a sense of what's coming up, because it's August and things get busy. So on Friday, we have a Rules Committee meeting, that's noon, in the council library. Next week, we have a regular section, session on the fourteenth. We have a council work session on the sixteenth, and there you'll discuss what could be three wastewater ordinances for consideration in the first cycle in September. And at some point next week, you should get your budget books, because the following week, that's starting August nineteenth through August twenty-second, you're going to meet four evenings in a row, starting at six o'clock in this room, to learn about a proposal for next year's budget. So that's what's coming up in the next three weeks. But yes, before you is a question about what to do about August twenty-eighth. We're scheduled to have a committee of the whole, but with the council work session, those present at the council work session who heard about the transit said, this looks like a fairly simple item that can be introduced on the fourteenth without committee and resolved on the twenty-eighth. So that would involve canceling the committee of the whole. Some of you may recall that for the last three years, the last Wednesday of August, it's time for the council to take up recommendations from the Public Safety Local Income Tax Council Committee. And those are coming up and would be ready for your consideration on the twenty-eighth. They have to be done by, before September. So you have two items that require a special session, and you've heard from Councilmember Volin that the land use committee has voted to take up a second night of consideration of the PUD on eighteen hundred North Walnut. So I have a proposed motion, but it's up for your editing and final adoption.
Thank you, Mr. Sherman. Councilmember Volin, did you have a question?
So it is definitely the committee's preference to meet before council, since we always limit our meetings. I anticipate after tonight's meeting that we would need the same amount of time to take up the concerns that were brought up tonight about the PUD. Do we have a sense of how long the, what was the second item?
Well, the transit one, you can give me a sense. You were there.
The wastewater?
It seems like that's fairly quick. The, not the wastewater, it's the allocations of PSL money.
Oh, the local income tax.
And that has not taken much time at the council. Five of you sit on the committee, but I, I'm, offer, suggest that start with the special session. Both of those items are being noticed, the public hearings for those items are being noticed. And if we start at six-thirty, I don't think that meeting will last more than an hour, an hour and fifteen minutes is my guess. And then start the land use and go as long as you need to for the land use, without being constrained by another meeting. That, but it's up to you.
Well, I'll also point out that this meeting will be done within an hour. And, you know, I, we had been accustomed, once upon a time, to meeting at seven-thirty. That is not a huge hardship. If we had multiple committees meeting on a Wednesday night, that pushed a special session, a regular session, back to later than seven-thirty, I could, even I would object to that. But I would respectfully request the same schedule as tonight, five-thirty to seven-fifteen. We brought that meeting in on time, and then we'll have whatever time we need at seven-thirty. But I'm certainly open to suggestion.
I might suggest that it might not take two hours, and it'd be nice to have the option of having ours after what we know is going to be a short council meeting. And instead of waiting for two hours and maybe we're done in an hour, we have to wait around an hour before the next meeting starts.
So the reason I'm hesitant about this is because the last time we did this, the committee of the whole, or the regular session that we held, went significantly longer than the start time of the land use committee meeting. This is last year, and I don't want that to happen again. So would the council be willing to commit to a maximum meeting of one hour? So that we could set a definitive start time for the land use committee meeting?
You mean for the special session?
Right, for that the special session be limited to an hour.
There are two public hearings. I don't expect anyone to appear, but I'd hate to have you constrain the public if they come and were saying you can't speak, or you can't speak as much as you want, so...
So I've, I've been told by people who've attended land use committee meetings, they do appreciate knowing the start and the end time of the meeting. We advertised a five-thirty to seven-fifteen meeting tonight, we came in at that time. I, at least I can say is I can guarantee you that the land use committee meeting will be done before seven-thirty if the council chooses to go that way.
Are there any other comments, preferences, on whether the land use committee is before or after the special session?
Again, all I would ask is that the special session be limited.
Mm-hmm. I, well, I'm not sure we can guarantee that, but because of potential public comments is what you were...
It's likely it will be done in an hour, but I, I don't know who will come into the room.
Okay. Well, would somebody like to make a motion?
I move that the land use committee be scheduled for five-thirty on the August twenty-eighth, and that the special session be scheduled for seven-thirty. And the land use committee to, to end at seven-fifteen. I need a second.
Second.
Okay. Will the clerk please call the roll on that motion?
Does that include the cancellation of the committee of the whole?
Yes, thank you.
I move that the council cancel the committee of the whole and schedule a land use committee meeting for five-thirty and special session for seven-thirty. I need a second. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry about that.
Okay, so Councilmember Volin?
Yes, please.
Sims?
Yes, please.
Sterbaum?
Abstain.
Sandberg?
Abst, yes.
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
And Rallo?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, six zero one. It is, that is our schedule. Anything else, Mr. Sherman?
No, thank you.
No, thank you. Okay, very good. Is our motion for adjournment?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.